I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for November 23rd, 2020 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. And I'll open up tonight with item 2A, my COVID-19 update for November 23rd. Island Hospital to date has tested 8,379 people since March. We've had a total and tested in Anacortes for 106 cases. Thirteen people have been hospitalized. In the last week in Anacortes, we had 13 new cases. In addition to the 13 new cases this week and 13 new cases, we've had 26 in the last two weeks, 13 each week. Skagit County estimates that in Anacortes proper, we have somewhere between 115 and 125 current COVID cases. And it's a little blurred because some of the testing is done here at Island and some of it's done over in Skagit. So that's their best estimate based on numbers. So we definitely have current cases of COVID-19 happening in Anacortes. 26 new cases in the last two weeks. In Skagit County, there were 93 new cases last week. And due to the increased volume of the lab testing, Department of Health has asked that the labs stop sending out negative test results and they only contact you if you have a positive result. So in total in Skagit County, we've had 1,736 COVID cases since March. We've had 125 people hospitalized and we now have had 26 deaths in the county. The Washington State Department of Health confirmed 150,000 confirmed cases of COVID and 2,738 deaths in the state. In our county, the county should have fewer than 25 new cases per 100,000 over 14 consecutive days. We currently are at 210 new cases per 100,000. And last week we were at 90 cases per 100,000. The county must have greater than 50 individuals tested for each new case during the prior week. And we're still waiting information from the state on that. The percentage of individuals testing positive must be less than 2% and we're currently at 7.1% in the county. The percentage of hospital beds occupied in the county must be less than 80% and we're currently at 87%. And lastly, the percentage of beds occupied by COVID-19 cases must be less than 10% and we're currently at 8.8%. And those metrics are in place so if we ever want to move to another phase. So there's kind of always been the metric we've tracked along. In the United States, we've had 12.4 million cases of COVID and over 250,000 deaths to date. And globally, 58 million cases and 37.5 million people have recovered. And there's been 1,390,000 deaths in the world due to COVID. And that is my COVID update for tonight. The next item is item 2B. And that's on boards and committee appointments. And I need a confirmation tonight from the council. And I'm going to go through the ones that I'm asking for confirmation on and I'm open to any questions you may have. For the Library Board of Trustees, I'm asking for confirmation for Courtney O'Rourke. Her term would be starting January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025. Dave Duck is retiring after many, many years of tireless service to the library. And Courtney was one of about eight or nine applicants. So we interviewed four individuals in the community last week. And the Board of Trustees chose Courtney because of her strategic planning. They felt like she had a strength there that could offer something to the board that they did not have. So I'm asking for confirmation on Courtney. I can all run through all of them. Well, no, let's just do one at a time. So can I have a confirmation for Courtney O'Rourke?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
I move that we approve her appointment to the Library Board.
Second.
With the motion by Mr. Young and second by Ms. Cleland McGrath, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was Mayor Gear. It was actually, I would be happy to do it. I was hoping to, but Carolyn Moulton was actually the person who seconded.
Oh, Carolyn, okay, Carolyn. So second by Carolyn. And so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So the second item tonight is I'm asking for a reappointment to the Housing Authority Board for Amanda Hubick. This is her reappointment for her term starting January 21st to go to December 31st, 2025. Amanda joined the board a couple of years ago. She fulfilled someone's vacant term and she's done a great job of serving our community. She also serves in Olympia as Alex Ramos Assistant. Can I ask for a motion for approval of Amanda Hubick to the Housing Authority Board?
Mayor Gear.
Mayor Gear. I would like to move to appoint, reappoint Amanda Hubick to the Housing Authority Board.
Second.
With the motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath and second by Mr. Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And then finally, appointments of Councilman Moulton as a city council rep. I'd like to recommend Councilman Moulton as the city council representative on the Accessible Communities Advisory Committee for the term effective December 1st, 2020 until November 30th, 2023. Carolyn, can you tell us about that role and then the council can weigh in?
Oh, sure. So this is a committee that was formed several years ago and is going to be revitalized going forward. So it is to make our community more accessible for everyone in our infrastructure and our, not just our philosophy, but making it real. So every ability visitor and resident will have access to sidewalks, roads, infrastructure, buildings to make sure we're accessible to everyone physically. And I'm happy to be considered for the position on the committee.
Okay. Well, this is an appointment that I can make. And unless I hear any objections from the council, I will make that appointment. Okay? Carolyn, I hereby appoint you to continue as our city council representative on the Accessible Communities Advisory Committee, effective December 1st until November 30th of 2023. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'm honored.
Oh, we're honored to have you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Traffic Safety Committee met. And is someone here from Public Works or?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Traffic Safety Committee met last Tuesday. Myself, Ms. Moulton and Mr. Carter. And we do this quarterly. We had a Public Works Director, Captain Fuller from the Police Department. And Will Lederman was his first meeting running this where normally Sandy has. So he's taken over that role. The only things we really went into were parking issues with the Gremis Island Ferry, whether it should be, or expanding. We were looking at possibly expanding some residential parking permits there. We already have residential parking allowed there. And also four-hour parking possibilities at the Quanis Park. And I know I'm, oh, and also making sure that the Engineering Department is looking into, after the council approved the crossings cottage neighborhood, that some traffic calming issues that might come up as that development progresses. And there was one last thing and I know Ms. Moulton will jump in if I miss something. So we may start seeing, or we will see tsunami routing signs soon. Not sure when those will come up, but not to be alarmed. But we will be putting up tsunami evacuation routing signs around the city probably within the next couple of months. And if I missed anything, I know Ms. Moulton will jump in.
Thank you, Matt. The next item is our item 2D. It's our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Miller.
That's also me, Mayor. LTAC met not only last week, but the week before. This is the time of year when LTAC does normally meet to talk about funding for next year's events. Again, the funds collected by our hotel and motels in Anacortes for promoting tourism. Obviously, this year has been significantly changed by that. And one of the main things we were talking about was how much funding is left from last year. And it's going to be about a $70,000 carryover. And then we also spent some time talking about estimating with the help of Mr. Hoagland's Crystal Ball and the hoteliers looking at what they think the industry is going to do in 2021. So trying to figure out that number and then sort through the requests. And speaking of the requests, we did have a presentation from, I will probably butcher her name, Shaleen Rathkopf, who is of Northwest, used to be Would Be Race Week, now going to be Northwest Race Week. She gave a presentation to LTAC and the members of the LTAC were very positive in supporting that with LTAC funds to get that going here in Anacortes in June. So that was a presentation. But I think the most important takeaway for council, when this comes before council in the next couple of weeks, that the LTAC committee was leaning very favorably towards dipping in, a little bit into reserves, the, for lack of a better term, reserves that the LTAC set aside to help 2021 events really, really go. So we're going to have requests. There's always more dollars requested than we have available. But the committee was leaning towards supporting those requests, even with going into our set asides by approximately $25,000. So not a significant amount, but leaning forward to making sure when we get back on track to normal life and events in Anacortes, LTAC wants to lean forward to get those going again. So I think that's it from LTAC.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Then we have a Fiber Committee report. Item 2E.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougal.
The Fiber Committee met last Thursday afternoon and we covered several things. I'll just give some highlights. We have a dark fiber ordinance coming that's almost complete. And this will be an ordinance that specifies kind of how and when and how much dark fiber can be leased to third parties within the city's coverage area. We discussed the business plan some more, the plan that was presented last week by Ms. Hsu, Mr. Lindberg, and discussed, you know, essentially like modeling out what it would look like if we were to say amortize whatever construction loans over 30 years versus pay them off as fast as possible via, you know, net revenues that come in over the next few years. And I think we kind of settled on a sort of a Plan A, Plan B way of looking at that, where Plan A would be to pay off any construction loans as fast as possible. And then Plan B, if for some reason we have cash flow issues elsewhere that we maybe look at to alternately like amortize construction loan over time and thus free up some cash flow to cover, you know, if we have shortfalls in other parts of the budget, that sort of thing. So that's kind of where the Fiber Committee left off with that. I think, you know, that the Fiber Department will be back with probably another presentation before the end of the year with a business plan to discuss further. We also discussed status of the aerial expansion happening through the rest of this year. We've got those areas one through six that you've all seen on the map. Some pre-install work has been done in several locations already for that, those expansions. And the splicing is happening this week in areas one and five. So we should see a whole bunch of customer activations in the next few weeks after that splicing got done because that's kind of the last step before we actually do the installations. And then for 2021 expansion, this is the map where we look to expand everywhere east of roughly A Avenue. And the team is working with NoaNet to begin. Like they've gotten all of the poll data and other data sort of, they're getting ready for submitting applications to, you know, to run our fiber along the utility poles in that expanded area. So getting out ahead of that because that can be a several-week process. And then numbers wise, we all just saw a report. So we're still, you know, we're roughly, you know, just above, call it about 200, almost to 270 customers total activated on the network. And we've got 45% take rate in the Central Business District and just under 40% take rate in our other trial zones in Old Town and M Avenue. So that's all looking good. And then the expansion areas, we're at about roughly 20% take rate in those. And Mr. Miller, did you have any other items from that meeting?
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on now to item 2F. It's our Park and Recreation Committee report.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Just to pre- preface to this, my internet's a little funny right now. I do not have Anacortes fiber. I'll just say that. I wish I did right now, but not quite yet. So if I cut out, Mr. Young can kindly take over for me. Thanks, Anthony. We were both at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting last week with Mr. Lunsford, also Dustin South, Nicole Johnston. And I think that was it for staff. So we talked about recreation and events, which went great through the fall. Camp Active was a great success with grades K through eight. And there were partnerships with the library and the school district. And it was a great way to get kids outside and by extension their parents. So it was very successful, but right now that's on hold due to new COVID restrictions. So they're in a holding pattern there. But there is going to be a virtual Zoom breakfast with Santa coming up, December 5th and 6th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And people can register for that online. If you go to the city website, the Parks Department page, you'll see quick links, which is really cool. So there's a list of great links and one of them is to register for recreation programs. If you click there, you can register to have a meeting with Santa. So that's pretty awesome. We talked about the Depot Restroom Construction Project, which is partway completed. And the next thing that will happen is the footprint and pad will be prepped with all the pipes for the plumbing and everything. And the prefab restroom will arrive in around mid-January. So that will, should be up and running in plenty of time for spring, summer events and the farmer's market. As an aside here, I also want to mention that council received a great update from Parks Director John Lunsford. So a lot of this will be familiar to the council, but this is, I also want to share this with the public. Grandview Cemetery was another subject that Ms. Johnston apprised us of. The last of the poplar trees came down and they're, they've torn up the asphalt road that was like this with all the roots. And so that's coming along great, actually a little bit ahead of schedule. So Tiger Construction is doing that project at the moment. As for the ACFL, the main thing lately has been downed trees with all our windstorms and the trail users have been letting parks know about that. So ACFL staff has been out diligently clearing those and repeatedly and also making sure that the water is flowing from East of Hart's Creek, from Hart Lake and also between Big Beaver Pond and the 32nd Street Swamp. And that's done by hand. There aren't really any, there aren't any power tools. But they have permits, the parks have permits to do that, to keep that flow going in those two spots. We talked about Washington Park. We got a great update from Mr. Vog, who I forgot to mention earlier in this briefing. So revenue was down overall because of COVID, but the boat launch that's been recently completed and there was the ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday, that the boating revenue has been great and surpassed last year's. And all the camping revenue is, has been down for the year. But October 2020, there was almost twice as much revenue from camping as October 2019. So people are still camping and we're taking advantage of that great October weather. So hopefully we'll see even more gains by the end of the year. So good job by Washington Park staff. Coslin Park is moving along with a new brick plaza to be installed starting next week. And there's been public input on that project, which has been great. And after January 1st, Brian Elliott will build the monument and everything will be ADA accessible there. So that will be, that will be great. The Parks Department is working in conjunction with the Samish Tribe and the Port of Anacortes to do better signage and recognition of the Samish tribe history and culture in our town. One of the things that will involve is new signs to help incorporate tribal history and culture into our greater awareness. And then N Avenue Park will be renamed to honor the Ironwood Samish settlement that was here in the past. Good news for bike park advocates. It did not work out for the bike park to be placed within the ACFL, but there is city property that's owned, that's actually in the county. It's outside of city limits and it's land up near Whistle Lake. So Park staff is currently in conversations with Skagit County about what that would look like and how we could potentially move forward with that. And financing is obviously going to be a big concern. But hopefully a lot of people who are excited about that will help step up in that regard. There won't be a Wonderland Walk unfortunately this year. So staff's been working on creating opportunities for people to get outside on their own. And businesses downtown are encouraged to decorate and light, light things up so that people can walk or ride bikes or even drive up and down Commercial Avenue and vote for their favorite business. And we might see some random light displays in parks around town. So I think that's it. I just want to thank Parks. Victoria Wong has been great with social media, doing four posts a week for the Parks Department and helping keep our citizens and ourselves really up to date on all the things that are going on at the Parks and Rec Department. So thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Great report. Any additions to that? All right, we'll move on to item 2G, which is our Tourism Promotion TBA Advisory Board Report. And that's from Mr. Young.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Gear. I just wanted to report that the TPA continues to meet. We're working through trying to, we've created a draft work plan and we're looking at the ways that we can be of value, particularly coming out of COVID. The process for hiring either an executive director or a consultant, we're looking at both ways to see which serves us better right now and allows us to be able to get the most that we can out of the resources that we can. Part of that is, as a body, we talked a lot about being extremely frugal given COVID and the decision of plans to benefit our county. We're getting feedback from all of our stakeholders, which includes the Lodging Association as well as the cities. We're working with them. And our guiding principle is to advance not only tourism, but also the hoteliers and people to come to our area. We will set cost targets with marketing versus administration to bring tourism dollars to Skagit. And the main question that we are trying to answer is how do we deliver value? I think that the group itself is making some extraordinary progress in the short time that we've been meeting. But lots of things are on the table. We're communicating with all stakeholders and we just wanted, you know, all of the cities involved to recognize that we're really working hard to partner and to figure out how we come out of COVID with our best foot forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mayor Gear, I'd also like to move that we excuse Councilman Jeremy Carter. He gave a, he's out of town and he needed, you know, to be excused. So I move that we do that.
Okay.
With the motion by Mr. Young and second by Mr. Walters, all in favor, excusing Mr. Carter? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Carter is excused. And Mr. Young, thank you for representing us on this county-wide advisory board. I really appreciate it. Washington State long ago did away with tourism as the main focus. And I think it's so important that we as counties now have a mechanism to focus on tourism for our long-term economic stability and to share our resources with other people. So thank you for that.
Mayor Gear, if I can just add one other thing. You know, truly, I think this is a wonderful thing for our county, particularly given that we've sometimes operated very separately as cities, to have a unified group that focuses on this very issue and particularly now, given so much hurt that's come out of COVID, economic. And so what we're doing right now is trying to figure out how do we use those dollars? And quite honestly, we will not really begin to receive dollars until nearly the end of first quarter 2021. So all of these are projections. We're just looking forward to when that happens, how do we best use it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to move to public comment. And this is open for anyone in the community that wants to talk to the council about something that is not on the agenda tonight. And I might remind everyone that last week we closed the public hearing on the budget. But if you do have a budget comment, you can submit it in writing to us. And that would be the appropriate way because the council has heard you. They will deliberate tonight on the budget. So now the public comment is open for anything that is not on the, on the agenda. So if you could raise your hand if you have, okay, one panelist. And that is, who do we have there? Okay, Rochelle. So you're going to speak to us about something that's not on the budget tonight, all right?
Hopefully, maybe.
All right, Rochelle, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. So I may or may not. I'm not quite sure. Thank you for talking or thank you for letting me speak. Hopefully, Mayor Gear, we get a chance to speak directly soon when we have the time to return one of my phone calls. I would really look forward to that conversation. Anyways, I would like to say mahalo to the city council for your amazing work and time you put into the betterment of this community and its optimistically brilliant, diverse and inclusive future. We mostly seem to be in agreement that Anacortes needs to stay current and involved when it comes to inclusivity and the progression of the city to truly take care of the needs of this community. At least 30% of all calls ACD responds to could benefit from the social workers. I doubt at this point a single member of this council disagrees that to better our community and its police, we absolutely need to include social workers and implement them to be, implement them in a truly impactful manner. But as I see it, you need to look at this issue as life or death because it is. We are in the midst of a severe mental health crisis in this community, which includes depression, suicide, drug and alcohol abuse, an opioid epidemic, food insecurity and lack of housing, as well as the pandemic. Mental health issues are going to become even more prevalent. We have the ability now to help save lives. So I implore you to embed a social worker now while working on a more comprehensive plan to implement a strong social worker game in the future to work for and with the police department and community. We honestly as a city have a chance to help prevent needless harm and even death amongst our citizens. Even if just one social worker can't do it all, that's not a reason to deny our community of the immense benefit that at least one social worker can provide today, now, 2021 ASAP. If you choose not to implement an embedded social worker now and put it off until you have studied and planned its perfect implementation in the future fiscal years, it's possible countless families in life would negatively be impacted and even lost. And I believe if you vote against implementing a social worker now, the needless deaths and preventable detrimental effects on this community would be be on the City Council's shoulders and conscience from here until starting a robust social worker program in our police force. The quantity of the work only one social worker can provide shouldn't preclude them from offering impactful services to the community, to our community. This is a decision that should be based on how impactful a social worker today can be and will continue to be in the future. We need to expand on social workers in APD's future, but since there is an emergent need today, putting off an embedded social worker in APD is reckless and will most likely cost preventable lives and our fellow community members, of our fellow community members. And it is unnecessary and unacceptable. Please do something now by standing up for this community and embedding a social worker now and then work towards growing an inevitable program of embedded social workers in APD's future. Mahalo.
Thank you Rochelle. Thank you. All right, is there?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council tonight? Okay, so we're going to move on then from public comment to our consent agenda. Items 4A and B are minutes and approval of claims.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Miller, but I'll go ahead and move, move to approve items A and B of our consent agenda.
And Mr. Young will second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Miller. We have a second by Mr. Young to approve items 4A and B. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll nu, now move on to item 5 under Other Business. 5A is open for public comment. This is affirmative, First Amendment to Schedule 139, a voluntary long-term renewable energy service agreement. This is a discussion of possible action. Russ Pittis from the city is here tonight to present, along with Tyler O'Farrell as his guest to give us any additional information we may need. Welcome, Russ.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, basically you have a contract amendment for the Schedule 139 Voluntary Long-Term Renewable Energy Service Agreement. Quite a mouthful. Basically, this is a contract basically to purchase green power through PSE Shuck and Chuck wind facility for all our meters that we have over the next 20 years. What I'd like to do is introduce Tyler and let him talk to you the reasons for the amendment. And he can answer any questions you may have and give us a brief description on how the Shuck and Chuck plant's doing now. Tyler?
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Mayor, for the time. As Russ said, we have an amendment that we want to put forward for signature. This is an updated price strip to the 20-year agreement that the City of Anacortes has agreed to. We have updated the pricing because the project experienced significant delays since the beginning of January 2019, when the agreement was supposed to go into effect. In those delays, we have acquired a significant amount of liquidated damages that we have purchased renewable energy credits on the city's behalf in that time. And then also, we have applied them to reducing the overall charge for the program participation over the 20-year price strip. The project is going live this month and the city will be start, sorry, start building this month. So we are putting forward that amendment now. We do have a price strip that we can share with the council and with you, Mayor, if that interferes. But I'm here to answer any questions on PSE's behalf.
All right. Counsel, questions?
Mayor Gear.
Um, we'll start with Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I don't have the old table in front of me of the previous agreement, but the rate per kilowatt hour is significantly changed? Or can you real quickly give the council a brief on that? Would, would, would the number change is significant?
I'm more than happy to do that. So if you look here, I'm sharing my screen right now. We have the 20-year price strip that City of Anacortes has agreed to. The original pricing is in the top half here. What you'll see is the energy credit is at 4.7125 cents per kilowatt hour. That is what the city would get credited per kilowatt hour on their, on each bill that the Green Direct price strip is added to. And then this is the original pricing charge, the table below, from 2019 through 2038. And as you can see, it was originally set at 5.021 cents per kilowatt hour and then going up to 6.45, 6.495 cents per kilowatt hour, ending in 2038. Now with the combination of the liquidated damages that reduce the overall charge and also the phase two project for Lund Hill Solar, we are blending those two prices to reduce the rate pretty significantly. So you'll see that the charge that was originally supposed to start at 5.021 cents per kilowatt hour is now been reduced to 4.323 cents per kilowatt hour. With that, we have also lowered the energy credit that is associated with it as well. It is now 4.5634 cents per kilowatt hour. So as you can see, in the first couple of years, the charge for Green Direct will be lower than your actual credit. So you'll be experiencing some savings in these first three, couple of years as well. And then you'll see, just for administrative purposes, you'll have two months being charged in 2020, and then you will have 10 months being charged in 2040, just so you still get that full 20 years.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another question. Who's that? Mr. McDougal.
I, I had a pretty similar question, actually. I, I was able to find the, the original, yeah, the, the original pricing. It looks like the first two or three years, we're roughly saving about seven or eight percent, and then it drops down to we're saving roughly about three or four percent. Is that basically the high-level picture?
Yeah. He would be able to, a, a couple of the customers have requested updating the models that show the pricing impact for Green Direct. We would be more than happy to run one of those for City of Anacortes as well, but we are seeing about the same, we are seeing about the same pricing impact. Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, looks good.
Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young.
Uh, just a question for Mr. O'Farrell. Just out of curiosity, you mentioned we've had, you know, liquidated damages. Could you tell us just a little bit of what that is and how this sort of makes up for that? Just, not a whole lot, but just so we understand it and the public will understand what that is as well. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. So, as I said at the beginning, this project or this program really was supposed to start in January 2019, and this project was supposed to go live at that time. It definitely did not. There was significant construction delays that were associated with that. And with that, and the contract that PSE has signed with the developer, they were not able to meet some of those timelines. And there were penalties that were associated with not meeting those timelines. All costs and benefits that are associated with those liquidated damages need to go back to the customer. PSE can't simply do anything with them. They need to go back to the customer. So within that time, from January 2019 up until this current date, we were purchasing renewable energy certificates from the Wild Course Wind Farms in Washington to continue to help City of Anacortes meet their renewable energy goals. That only ate up a certain percentage of those liquidated damages or the fines that we received from the developer of the Shuck and Chuck project. And with the remaining balance of those liquidated damages or the fines that we collected, that was input into reducing the pricing for the City of Anacortes to participate in Green Direct programs.
Very good. So basically, any of those penalties, the City of Anacortes, you know, was able to benefit with the lower rate?
Absolutely. Yes.
Excellent explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
I had another question, actually, from Mr. Pittis. If I understand correctly, this, making this move takes essentially all of the city's electricity consumption, like all the facilities, the water treatment plant, everything, and moves it into essentially consumption of green, green electricity from wind farms, correct? Wind farms or other green electricity?
Yes, that's correct.
Awesome. Do we have, and maybe, you know, not to put you on the spot, but at some point before, say, the end of the year, do we have a, a sense for number of, number of tons of CO2 that we would be no longer putting into the atmosphere by making this move? Like what, what our savings would look like on an annual basis?
Yes, I'm sure I can work with Tyler to come up with that for you.
Okay, that'd be great to see.
Definitely happy to provide that to Russ.
Yeah, it'd be wonderful to be able to show that to the community that we're, that we're making that move.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public tonight? This is open for public comment. Okay, back to you, counsel. This is a discussion tonight. We can act on it. We can discuss it. We can bring it back at another meeting.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, since we've already adopted this contract and this contract amendment will simply reduce the cost, I'm pretty excited about the project overall and also about the amendment that will make it even cheaper. So I move that we approve the contract amendment.
I second.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young, correct? Any other discussion, counsel? So we have a motion and a second to approve the First Amendment to Schedule 139, our voluntary long-term renewable energy source agreement. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters? Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on then to item 5B. This is also open for public comment. This is Resolution 3007, making a declaration of substantial need for setting the property tax levy for 2021. When we finish that discussion, we'll go into the Resolution 3008, setting the city's year 2021 property tax regular levy increase. At this time, I will turn over items 5A and B, excuse me, 5B and C to Mr. Hoagland. Go ahead, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. See if I can share my, share my screen. So this is just a PDF of what's in your, in your packet. So Resolution 3007, Making a Declaration of Substantial Need. So as Mayor indicated, we have two resolutions for your consideration tonight. They work together. So Resolution 3008, the next item on the agenda, is authorizing a 1% property tax increase. The, the way the statute works, the 1% property tax increase is dependent on the IDB, which stands, the IPD, which stands for Implicit Price Deflator, which is published by the Office of Financial Management. It's based on August of the, the previous 12 months ending in August. So what it states is that property tax can be increased 1% or, it, it's the lesser of 1% or the IPD. And this year, the IPD was only at 0.6%, so less than the 1%. However, there is a provision that allows a full 1% property tax increase if a declaration of substantial need is made by resolution. So that's what this Resolution 3007 is. And I wanted to express a couple of items here that I think illustrate the substantial need that the city has this year and, and why the substantial need should be declared and a full 1% property tax increase authorized. As we've talked about in some of our meetings recently, the city employee costs, the staff costs alone in salaries and wages, just funded by the governmental funds, not including those costs in the utilities, is going to increase by nearly a million dollars next year, 950,000. We talked about that a little bit over the last couple of weeks. So in addition to that significant increase to support existing staff, one of our most significant revenue streams has been impacted by the COVID crisis. Our sales tax, at the time we put this resolution together, at least, the, the sales tax was down about 11% compared to what we had budgeted and, which represented about 241,000 in expected revenues that we hadn't received at that point. And that number, that 241,000 number continues to be about the same. We're, we'll talk more about this in a little bit, but we'll end up probably about a quarter million short in sales taxes of what we had initially projected. Utility tax is down a little bit. We've talked about that in some of our previous meetings. Because of the quarantine orders, the consumption, water consumption, and therefore sewer consumption are down pretty much across, across the board. And that's impacting our utility tax. So a couple of, I think, pretty salient issues there that, that support the substantial, the substantial need. So that's, that's what staff recommends, that Resolution 3007 be adopted so that a 1% property tax increase can be adopted as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have on the resolution of substantial need. If not, we can talk about the 1% property tax increase.
Mr., we have a one member of our audience who'd like to comment. Judy Billings, go ahead. Judy, can you hear me?
How about that? Can you hear me now?
Oh, we can hear you now. Welcome.
So, I'm a resident of Anacortes. Obviously, I've been here about three years. I think I'm having a real issue with, A, the amount of money that the city employees are making. I could not believe the salaries that I saw for a town of 17,000 people. I think that we are all suffering from COVID-19 restrictions and the lockdowns. I think a lot of businesses are suffering, and now you want to put more on our sales tax, or on our property taxes. I think it would be much wiser if the city would cut in some areas, like employees, because I think a lot of other employees in this town have lost their jobs because of these lockdowns. Businesses have lost income, obviously. Several are probably going to close because of this second lockdown. And so I find that, once again, the easy way is to just increase property taxes. I really think you need to look this over and find cuts instead of trying, once again, to increase our property taxes, which I feel are already very high. But also, like I said, I'm very concerned about the salary levels in Anacortes. I, I was really shocked, I have to tell you, about the amount of money that the employees of the city are making. So there you have it.
Thank you, Judy. Yep. Okay, let me, just one moment, please. Okay, so that's, I have no one else with their hand up, so Steve, you can go ahead and then open it up for council discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So let's talk about the, the impact of the, of the property tax. So this next Resolution 3008 would be what authorize, authorize- So this next Resolution 3008 would be what authorize, authorizes a 1% property tax increase. And I included in this a chart showing the, kind of, kind of the math of it, but if, if it's okay, if you can still see this, this is the spreadsheet, it's just a little easier for me to work in it. It's exactly the same information. But I thought, property taxes are, they're really, it's, they're confusing. So I thought I would just try and go through this real quickly and illustrate how property taxes work and what it, how, the impact to our, to our citizens. It is our, the city's largest, largest revenue stream, largest governmental revenue stream, tax revenues. And for many of our citizens, it's one of their largest, maybe after their mortgage, one of their largest, largest expenditure streams. It's, it is, property tax is expensive. The way it works is, it's called a budget-based system. So the property tax levy is based on the existing budget. So that's your, the budget being your current property tax levy. So for us, it's $5,296,000. That was our actual 2020 property tax levy. And so the way we get to what that increase is, we take the citywide assessment. So the entire city assessment is about 3.9 billion, expressed in thousands, it's, you know, 3.985. And then our current levy is 5.296. So to get to the millage, you just divide, you divide those into each other. So you divide the, the assessment into the levy to get the millage. Then with that millage, you can take the, take the assessment of your, of your property. So in 2020, the average assessment in Anacortes, the average residential assessment was 453,000. And keep in mind, assessment is different from appraisal. This is assessment from the, and by the county assessor's office for property tax purposes. So it's going to be different than what the house would be worth on the open market. But you take that assessment, divide it by thousand, or express it in thousands, that's 453.86. So to get to the levy amount, you take your millage rate, multiply it by your assessment expressed in thousands, and that gives you a rate, or a levy, this would be the city portion of the levy of $603.14. And that 1% increase then is $6, $6.03. And that would be a 1% increase for the year for the city's levy. And obviously, there are many taxing districts that play into this. This is the, the full list of taxing districts that a residential property taxpayer pays for in Anacortes. The, so this is that, that same illustration, 453,000 average assessment. There's the $603 city levy. The, of that, the county has a millage of $1.30, so that would generate $590. And you can just go down the list. The Conservation Futures, part of the county, Medic One Services, that's the EMS levy. The Dago Pool, sometimes confuse that the pool is part of the city, that the pool is a separate taxing district, a park and rec district. The Hospital Court of State gets about 31% of that total levy. School District gets about 24%. So that average assessment of 453,000 generates a total tax bill, $4,268, of which 603 belongs to the city. And again, that 1% increase is $6 for an average residential property in Anacortes for the year. That's the, that's the impact of the 1% property tax increase from the city. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have about that or anything else related to property tax or the substantial need.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
I think the city has, in the entire time I've been on the council, always taken the 1% property tax increase. And I think the reason for that is because inflation is generally higher than the 1% property tax increase, which is eroding the city's ability to pay its staff and pay for those benefits. And if we don't take the resolution of substantial need, there isn't a way to increase the city's revenue from property tax out of vote of the people. And the amount of money that it actually costs to run a vote of the people is almost the amount of money that we get from the 1% property tax increase. So this year, without the resolution of substantial need, we'd be collecting a $4 increase. With the resolution of substantial need, we can collect a $6 increase. It's, it's almost the minimus amounts of money. I do think that later on, when we discuss the budget, we are going to be talking about cutting positions and saving money on staff and not filling positions that are empty and trying to find those savings. But the increase that we should take here is cumulative. It applies for next year as well. And when cities don't take it, they find themselves in a substantial hole. I think maybe Burlington might be an example of that, because property tax is one of the most reliable sources of revenue, the one that we can rely on from year to year to run the essential services that people demand here in the City of Anacortes. So I'm very supportive of this, and if anyone else would like to weigh in, I'm, I'll hold off making a motion, otherwise I'd go ahead and do that now.
Mayor here.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, we, we have this discussion every year, but I believe this is the first year in my six years where inflation has been less than the 1%. Mr. Hoagland, can you correct me if I'm wrong on that one?
No, you are correct. This is the third time that I've experienced it in my 15 budgets that I've worked on.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is, I, I normally vote and support this. Couple of comments before, Mr. Walters, before you make the motion. I, I have a hard time getting behind it when inflation is less. I know you'll make a very valid, valid argument that usually it's more than 1%, but again, there's a reason that the, the state limits us in, in these increases, because we would just keep increasing it and increasing it to, to make our, to make our, to make our obligations. And, and the one other comment I have is I do appreciate the, the transparency of putting in the resolution that, that we exceed, we're exceeding $950,000 in wages and benefits increases for the city employees. And, and I tell you, I like that transparency because it's in the record and, and we, when we're, when we're having the negotiations with our employees, we need to think about it. So I'm, I'm sure the votes are there to support this increase. I appreciate that transparency in the resolution. And the, the only substantial need that I, I really see is in the next line, the $241,000, because we're not collecting the sales tax. But guess what? Every business out there is not collecting revenue. They're not able to give their employees wage increases. It's, it's the issue that I have, supporting this increase, when the people, the people who generate this, these dollars for us aren't able to do it and aren't able to, to give those increases. Again, valid points, Mr. Walters, it's just I, I have a hard time supporting this when our, when our basic underlying increase of 0.6% doesn't, doesn't make the cut. Again, I realize it's small numbers. We're talking about $54,000, $54,000. We're not bringing in the 20, we're, we're bringing in a quarter million less than we normally do, but everybody else is there. I will probably vote against this one, really just to have the, to show those folks who just can't, they, they don't have the ability to just raise wages and benefits for their employees. And, and, you know, we're doing it. And we're saying we're doing it, and we can't afford to do it, so therefore we've got to make a, make an increase. So that's enough on that, and I'm looking forward to listen to the motion.
Mayor here.
Mr. Young.
You know, I think both Councilman Walters, as well as Mr. Councilman Miller, made some great points. And, you know, the sentiment about what we have to do as council to wrestle with these decisions. You know, I've been on the fence about this, but quite honestly, the reason I am willing to support this is that I see that there's a need for the city to move forward. We have those obligations that are clear and present. And yet, I do think, though, that, you know, part of what we will need to do going forward in assessing where we can make additional cuts, and maybe even at some point in the future, some relief to the taxpayers, you know, I'm willing to support this. But I do think that as a council and as a city, we should review the future opportunities to reduce this obligation to taxpayers. But I think right now, where we are, given everything we need to do, the supportive services, will be the reason that I'll support it.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
I, I think that when we talk about reducing the expense to residents of Anacortes, the first place I would go would not be property tax, because we bill a resident of Anacortes much, much, much more than this in a single month of utility charges. And that's an area where we have less discretion to spend the money and potentially more possibilities for cost savings through automation or efficiencies in those provision of those services. I think it is, it's better that we adopt this resolution and, and adopt the very minor property tax increase that gets us more flexible revenue sources while simultaneously seeking opportunities to cut expenses in utilities, which have gone up pretty substantially in my time on the council. And we want to fully fund those so that we can provide good utility services to our residents. But they also haven't really received a lot of scrutiny in terms of cost savings. So that's where I would really start on the, on the cost side. Here, though, I would move that we approve the proposed resolution declaring the substantial need.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walter, the second by Mr. McDougal, to approve Resolution 3007. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Young? Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go on to item 5C. This is Resolution 3008, setting the city's year's 2021 property tax levy increase. This is an action item, also open for public comment.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of Resolution 3008.
Second.
Second. So we had a motion by Mr. Walters, and I think Ms. Moulton has the second on that. Came in pretty quick. Is there any public comment before I call for a vote? All right, Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote for Resolution 3008? Motion by Walters, second by Moulton for approval.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on now to resolu, I mean, excuse me, item 5D, which is Ordinance 3080. This is our 2021 to 2026 capital facilities plan update. This is a discussion-only item this evening. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have been talking about the CFP on and off throughout the budget process. One of the requirements of the CFP is that it matches with the budget that's being adopted. And the CFP and the budget need to be adopted simultaneously. There are a number of notice requirements that the CFP requires in addition to the notice requirements that the, the annual budget requires as well. So those, those notices are currently in place, and I did want to point out that all of this material is available for public review at the city finance website. And anybody can feel free to call me directly in, at City Hall. I'd be happy to discuss any of these things, any questions that anybody might have. So I wanted to, to go through this, kind of, this is, this is the full draft package. But as we get into it, you'll see there are some items that, that we need to revise. We started working on this, this summer, about the same time we started working on the, on the budget. So it's been several months for some of these items, and some of them have changed. And we'll point those out as we, as we go. And there's still, it's not, all of these aren't in the finished format. So the way our CFP is set up at the department level, there's a lot of other supporting documentation that's not included with this, in this tonight. But at the department level, we have a sheet set up, a budget sheet for each of the individual projects, and then a summary sheet. And what I wanted to do is just drop down directly to the summary sheets and go through those, and then I'd be happy to address questions on any of these projects. And we do have department heads on tonight as well, if, if there are questions that I can't answer. Hopefully, we can, we can manage it that way. But this first summary page here is on the general government, the area that we call general government. And one of the things I'll point out right away is the fiber project. So this was, this format was a carryover from our last CFP. Since then, we've, we've cut fiber out to its own department, so it's got its own department list now. And the numbers have changed somewhat. This is, this has been revised. But the Creosote pile removal, so this, again, this is, it started out in the initial budget, but as we got into it, we removed this from the budget. So we'll be making an edit here to remove the Creosote pile removal out of the 2021 budget. What we were looking at for this project was a combination of cash reserves and grants, and ultimately, that's what drove it out of the budget was, was the, the funding sources. The Community Youth Rec Center, that's another carryover item that, once we got the draft budget finalized, we moved it out of the 2021 timeframe, so we'll be bumping this out of the 2021 timeframe as well. The various facilities projects, we revised that down to 400,000 during the budget process. So that's another edit we'll make to match, so that it matches the budget. And this, this device or software, it's the control software. I'm trying to, I apologize, I don't remember if we've talked about this at full councils before. We have talked about this at the committee level, in finance committee. And this, this is the software that controls the HVAC system centrally for all of the buildings, City Hall, the decentralized buildings, like, such as library, the public safety building. So those decentralized buildings and City Hall are all controlled through the software, and it's failing, it's been failing for some, some time now. And we're told that there are no patches left or upgrades left on it. Once it fails for good, it'll just be done. We won't be able to patch it anymore. And that's, I'm, I'm told, that's, that's on the horizon, the near horizon. And I wanted to point out the funding sources here. We didn't fill in the funding sources for this, because we weren't exactly sure where that was going to come from. We were hoping that it was going to be grant-funded. We found out, I believe just today, I spoke with Mr. Pittis earlier today, that the grant opportunity for this did not come through. So we'll have to be looking at a different, a different resource for this. So my, my initial thought is REIT, since we are quite short on general cash. There's a provision for use of REIT for maintenance of existing capital projects, which in this case would be City Hall, that is the only- which in this case would be City Hall, um, that is the only funding source that comes to mind immediately for this. But that's, that's an item that, um, will be in the twenty twenty-one budget and the planned use of REIT to fund that, uh, unless council has other, um, other things they would like to discuss or consider for, for this control software.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Hey, uh, Mr. Hoagland, I may have missed it, sorry, when you, when you started the project summary sheet, um, those are, all those aren't changes from the previous plan because there's things that have been on there before. Uh, what, what, what are we looking at as far as, what are you, what are you trying to show me? The, the changes to the previous plan?
No, so, so this is, uh, this is the, this is what we have, uh, as the, the plan for adoption. So you're right, many of these projects, uh, will be familiar to, to council. You've seen these before. Um, so these aren't, yeah, they're not just the changes, these are the, the total department of plan requests.
Because obviously fiber's a big change to it and I, I don't think we've had that in our capital facilities plan before, did we?
Uh, I believe we put fiber in, um, during one, our last update.
Okay, no, it's a good id- it's a good idea. I just wasn't sure if we had it in there before. Okay.
Not the last update, the last amendment. So, um, we didn't do a full update, so the CFP is required to be, um, to have a full update at least every two years and we didn't have a full update last year. So it would have been during an amendment process.
Okay. Hey, uh, just when you, as you're going through it, if you could just highlight what, what is different from our last amendment would be helpful as well.
Okay.
Um, Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young.
Just a quick question for you, Mr. Hoagland. Uh, first of all, I really appreciate how you've laid this out for us. It, I find it would be very helpful. You mentioned that the community youth recreation center, um, that amount of money would be pushed out. What do you mean by that?
Yeah, so, um, I'm just not, uh, not pushing it out of like the planning horizon, but just out of the, the current timeframe. Um, my, uh, the ideal would be that, um, things change during fiscal year twenty twenty-one and through an amendment process, we can pull it back. Uh, but at this time, the way our, uh, resources are, are lining up, um, we don't have sufficient resources to support it in the, the current look that we have right now at twenty twenty-one. So the idea is to bump it out, um, to say the twenty twenty-two timeframe so that twenty twenty-one agrees with the twenty twenty-one budget. And then through amendment process, we can, we can pull it forward, hopefully.
Okay. Very good. I, I agree with that approach. I, I was just curious, you know, what you meant by it and also for the public to understand what it means.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton. Thank you. Um, thanks, Mr. Hoagland. My question about fiber, there is another page for fiber zone department further on. So is that where we're moving these numbers basically to, they're coming out of general government and going into the fiber?
Yep.
Department?
Yep, exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Great.
And these are, these are antiquated numbers. Now we do have, uh, updated figures for that, uh, that department. But yeah, that's exactly right.
Great, thanks.
Um, so the next department is parks. I'll drop down through to the summary page again. Um, so the two hundred fifty thousand per cemetery, it's, um, you know, that's not new. That has been in the, uh, in the budget, in the CFP and the budget previously. We're just getting started on that, uh, this year, twenty twenty-one. We, um, so we won't complete it though, it will need to roll into the twenty twenty-one timeframe and it is included in the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, so these, uh, this next item, three hundred fifty thousand for the Tommy Thompson trestle and causeway replacement, that is a new item for us. Um, parks department has a line on a grant that they're, they're hopeful about. Um, so that also is in the twenty twenty-one budget in Fund One oh eight, the parks capital, uh, parks capital fund. Seventy-five thousand for Washington Park campground improvements, that's not a new item that has rolled from previous CFP. This twenty-five thousand for cap center lookout and trail improvement, that is, um, that is new and, um, we have a very generous, uh, donation to help with that project. So, um, so that's what's in twenty twenty-one. Um, be happy to answer any questions you may have about anything else in, in, uh, in parks. And as I said, we do have other staff online if you have more detailed questions. So moving, moving down, here's our fiber department. Uh, there's only one project, so we'll just look at, um, no need to go to the summary, the summary page. Just, uh, right before this meeting started, there was an email exchange, uh, about this. So the three point one five five, I believe that is still current and agrees to our twenty twenty-one annual budget, but these outer years now are four point three five four million for the next three years. So no questions on fiber. We can move down to public safety. Uh, and what we're looking at here, it's, it's public safety, but what we have in this list are all fire EMS related items. Uh, I did want to point out that there, the, the timing on this was a little unfortunate. So there was, um, some miscommunication and, um, and lack of communication in the, um, for personnel reasons. Uh, so I still have, uh, on my, on my schedule to get together with, um, Assistant Chief Kennedy in the fire department to go through some of this material. Um, but what we're, we're going to be looking at, um, for funding for most of these is, um, impact fees and REIT where applicable. Um, it's likely we won't have excess, um, cash or fund balance, as council is aware. So we'll be concentrating on the projects that are impact fee and REIT eligible. Um, and we may be, we may be looking at bumping the preliminary work for the March Point Fire Station, Station Three, maybe bumping that out, um, because we don't have, we won't have sufficient impact fees at this point for everything that we have listed here. So there'll have to be some, some rebalancing in this department. The fifty-four thousand for ladder truck training tower, hundred forty-six thousand for station equipment and then fourteen thousand four hundred for, uh, fire and EMS equipment.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
It seems like this sheet here is one where it would benefit from some council prioritization. For example, we've got three million dollars for the March Point Fire Station in twenty twenty-three, but a million dollars, uh, for ladder trucks and a million dollars for main fire station upgrades in twenty twenty-two. Uh, some of those are fund balance, some of those are impact fees. So seemingly we could re-budget some of those to the March Point Fire Station if we wanted to prioritize that above the other items. And that would be my inclination at this point without hearing arguments for or against. Um, I do think that we need to have a, a real plan for how we're going to get some of this stuff done. And even if we don't have the impact fees, um, accumulated, we could, um, assumably bond or loan against that future stream of impact fees, somehow pay, pay off that, um, fire station if we built it before we had the i- impact fees assembled.
Yeah, I think, I think you're exactly right. That makes, that makes a lot of sense and that would be, um, the logical next step and much appreciated, I think, fire staff. So perhaps this is something we could, uh, approach at committee level, public safety committee?
That'd be great.
And/or finance committee.
Yeah, both. Thank you.
Uh, wastewater is the next department, so I'll drop down to summary page again. Uh, the one point two million up through one point seven, just a little bit of an inflator. Um, this is the, um, sewer system maintenance that you see, uh, every year we have in the budget. Um, pump upgrades as well, the, um, an annual item that we have in our budget, four hundred thousand for basin rehab, a hundred thousand for telemetry upgrades, uh, the dewatering facility, um, and then, uh, just, you know, various housekeeping projects. Uh, the big item here, twenty million dollars for the, um, treatment outfall project. So they're working, uh, working on the water system. Council will remember, we recently went through that bond issue, about a twenty-four million dollar bond issue. Um, part of it is allocated to the water department for that, uh, raw water line and clear well project and then the other portion for this project, the outfall project. Um, my, my last discussions with public works and it's been a couple of weeks now, but, uh, it looked, they were trying to get grant funding from, um, I want to say FEMA.
That's correct.
You know, for this project and, and it looked, um, it looked positive that, that that was going to take place. So I don't know if, um, public works committee, uh, or mayor may have more information on that. Um, but it looks like, um, the idea was initially that we would go out for a second bond issue if we needed. It doesn't look like that will be necessary now, um, with the, the grants that they have lined up along with the, um, the bond issue that we already did.
So, Mr. Hoagland, Mr. Buckamire has quoted the fourteen to eighteen million is probably the amount that, um, is conceivable we can receive from FEMA. So it's still not confirmed, but, um, they're seriously interested in our project and funding it. So, um, the majority of that would be funded, um, of that total amount would be funded, but we're waiting to hear.
If there's any, um, additional, oops, sorry, any additional questions on wastewater, otherwise we can drop down. Solid waste is the next department. It's not much there, just containers we budget thirty-three thousand a year to replace, uh, on an ongoing basis, the solid waste containers that wear out, uh, and that, it's around that number, it's not exactly, and obviously not exactly. Sometimes there's more or fewer, uh, containers that would need to be replaced in a, in a year. So no questions about that. We can drop down to the storm drain system.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, Mr. Hoagland, do, don't we, do we have to carry the solid waste trucks in their twenty twenty-one or, because I know we approved that. Do they? Just for accounting purposes, I don't know if it makes sense, do we have to have it in our twenty twenty-one plan?
So we, we carry those in the, the ER and R?
Oh, yeah, right. Never mind. Got it, thank you.
On the storm drain system, um, so this is, um, the top line there, three hundred thousand a year plus an inflator for, um, ongoing system upgrades and, you know, basin cleaning, that type of thing. The new item for this year is the city hall parking lot. That's one of the projects that was lined up to, um, help mitigate the, the results of, um, the storm drain issue that the city went through last year. Um, while we're, while we're here, I'll, I'll remind council that we did an interfund loan at the end of the year last year. Uh, the storm drain fund was, was quite low on operating cash. We did an interfund loan from the water department to the storm drain fund to put, to put that operating cash into a positive position. Um, this will be paid for, well, both of these lines will be paid for with capital cash. So we do delineate the, um, operating cash versus capital cash for, um, you know, both for accounting purposes and for actual use. So these, uh, and the capital cash was, had a robust balance at the end of the year, it was the operating cash. So there's, I guess I'm trying to say plenty of cash to do these capital projects. Um, and the operating costs are trending lower in twenty twenty than they were in twenty nineteen. So I'm, I'm comfortable that we'll be able to repay that, um, that loan over the three year period that we, that we issued it without raising rates, without raising rates in addition to what's already on the schedule. Uh, so that's storm drain. Transportation, I do want to apologize, in transportation, when we printed this out, um, we didn't include a summary page. So I apologize, uh, for that. We'll get that reprinted and reposted to the website. But this is the, the summary page for transportation. Um, ADA rants, um, Americans with Disability Act. Um, so we put, we put money into the budget every year for curb cuts, things of that nature to, um, to accommodate those ADA requirements. Sidewalk and trip hazards, that's an additional three hundred thousand a year for continued sidewalk replacement. We use REIT as a funding source. That stands for real estate excise tax. Uh, that's, um, one of our major funding sources for capital related projects. Uh, our avenue safety and mobility, two hundred thousand. Um, to start the project next year and three point five identified for, um, for the bulk of the project in twenty twenty-two. Dropping down Thirty Second and M, looking to start that project next year with the bulk of the work in twenty twenty-two. Uh, South Commercial Avenue Phase One, six hundred and twenty-seven, with nearly three million in twenty twenty-two. Um, State Crosses School, a hundred thousand next year, four hundred and ten the following year. Thirty-seventh Street paving in stormwater, fifty thousand to start that project next year and the plan to spend nine hundred the following year. And our annual pavement maintenance at one point eight. Uh, we've talked about this a little bit, we'll talk about it a little more later, uh, later tonight. Um, currently the draft budget sits at one million dollars, not one point eight. Um, and we can talk about that more here or later. Um, council's pleasure. So that's transportation. I believe the next fund is water. Bear with me, I'll scroll down to water department and get down to the summary page. Okay, summary page for water, the one point three, one point four million for pipeline replacements, that's, you've seen that every, uh, every year. Pump station upgrades, so ninety thousand next year to start the project for twenty twenty-two. Pump station upgraded, uh, the blue hair in sight. Reservoir maintenance, starting in twenty twenty-two and running through the next couple of years. Um, two hundred fifty thousand scheduled for Pass Lake, ten inch line, uh, cathodic protection that we have every year. Water system plan update, a hundred eighty-six thousand for twenty twenty-one. Uh, decommissioning the water treatment plant, budgeted for one point two next year and then a hundred thousand annually in telemetry upgrades. Um, the new clear well, we have that scheduled out over the next several years in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Property acquisition and water system security. Um, these two items, or sorry, the property, the property acquisition, I believe, um, perhaps if somebody in the public works committee has more perhaps if somebody in the Public Works Committee has more information on that. The only property acquisition I can think of is the property that we purchased this year, unless there's something else on the line, so that would be an edit to that. But, I'm sorry, I don't have more information on that at my fingertips. The property that we purchased earlier this year, I thought we added, I remember adding in an earlier CFP amendment.
Well, Mr. Buckamire could add to that for our next time we bring this to council. I'm not sure what that is either.
And the water, the water system security, that's an item that we included. I think that's the Crowley system, and we included for that in the bond issue. So that's the, that's what I have for CFP update. So the public hearing is scheduled for next week on the CFP.
On December 7th, correct?
Sorry, yes, the week after, December 7th. So that'll be coming back to council at that time, and we'll make some of these edits prior to that.
Very quick.
You happy to try and answer any questions council may have? Or if you have anything you'd like to see the next time we meet, any kind of expectations? We would love to hear that.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Molton. Mr. Hoagland, you mentioned earlier in your presentation that we have the summary sheets here, and there are also budget sheets that we could look into. What is the best place for us to find those, should we like to delve in a little more to certain things?
The, regarding the CFP, the CFP package?
Yes. So if we had like a burning interest, say, in the hydrothermal processing project or anything else, something in parks, if we wanted to really dig into any of those, where would we find that info?
Sure, so this, we'll get this reposted to the website with some of the edits that we talked about. But the but those, so the summary page, before the summary page is where each of the individual project sheets are. So, so the, this is, I don't, I don't know that I'm answering your question, but these do, these do work together, so these all feed into that summary page and
Sorry.
No, please, go ahead, I
My question, I wasn't clear, but I see, I see that relationship. But say we wanted to know even more specific than, even more specifically than the project detail sheet, would we talk to the department head about those?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I'm, you can, you can contact me if you have questions. But feel free to contact the department head directly. I would expect department heads, if they can't answer those, they can, they can direct it to staff who can.
Okay, or maybe both, you know, if I were to send an email, I could send it to a department head and you at the same time.
Sure, absolutely.
Some of these could be taken up at the committee level too, if we have time, which I don't know if we do. So it sounds like it'll be kind of email and phone call communication would be best.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Molton. Okay, so this was discussion tonight, as Mr. Hoagland said. Questions, get them to him, get him to the department head if something's not clear. And we will bring back a, an adjusted report with some of the additional information we didn't have this evening. And we'll bring it back to council on the 7th, is that correct, Steve?
That's correct, you have public hearing and additional discussion on the 7th.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walter.
The sheet that I suggested us maybe rebalancing or reprioritizing is the fire department. Are we expecting to have a finance committee and/or a public safety committee meeting by the 7th? Or should we just plan to have fire attend on the 7th and we can just talk about it?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, there's a public safety committee meeting scheduled the 2nd of December, the 1st of December.
We'll, we'll address that next week then and bring it back.
So 12-1, public safety, excuse me, public safety meeting committee, public safety committee meeting.
Yeah, and I've got that, I've got that down. And of course, we'll look at the council's priority, the resolution that we passed as far as the fire, fire plan, long-term plan, I'm sure. And I'm sure we'll have influence from our fire chief as well.
Okay, wonderful.
We have a, the typical schedule for finance committee is the 2nd and 4th Wednesday of the month, so December 9th. December 9th is, and we can call an ad hoc finance committee meeting as well, so.
I would recommend that, Steve.
So perhaps, so if December 1st, public safety is meeting, perhaps December 2nd, this committee can meet.
That would be good.
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
Or the 25th.
Yes, the 25th may work, I'm going to be out of town that afternoon. But I could have somebody sit in for me from finance. Yeah, that would work, that's not a bad idea.
Okay, we'll work on getting that scheduled. Any other comments, concerns? All right, we'll have those meetings, and we'll bring them back for public hearing and further discussion on the 7th. So at this time, I'm going to move our conversation to item 5E, this ordinance 378. This is adopting the 2021 budget, this is a discussion only tonight. It's your opportunity, council, to talk about everything you've heard, ask additional questions. Can I ask Steve to lay out where we've been, what we've heard? Kind of just remind us, get us all on the same page as we go into this discussion this evening. Okay, Mr. Hoagland, it's all right here.
So I put together a little bit of history here, what we've done so far this year. And I did want to point out in the, kind of the header here, it's not your normal year and not your normal budget. And I think it's, at least for me, important to remember that. But so far, status to date, October 5th, we kicked things off with the mayor's budget message. On the 19th, we held the public hearing on revenue sources. Also, on the 19th, reviewed governmental budget. On the 26th, reviewed public works budget. On November 2nd, the public hearing on the full budget was opened. On the 9th, that public hearing continued. On the 16th, that public hearing continued, and we had budget discussion. Then the end of the 16th budget hearing was closed. And those, that material can be found on the city's website. It's, this is, this is the link I just copied into there. But if you go to the Anacortes website and go to the finance department, click on budget, that material will be there. But I wanted to talk about taxes. And it, talking with the mayor last week, it kind of occurred to me that, that maybe it could bear a little more conversation because they are such a, such a big part of our budget and they are really confusing. So Benjamin Franklin is credited with saying, nothing is certain except death and taxes, and taxes are easy when you're paying them. But after that, they aren't easy. They're complicated, confusing, they're hard to budget. But they are also the basis of what the city can spend. So I wanted to make sure that council and others had kind of a firm idea of how we come up with those revenue projections, because that is the basis of how we set the expenditure budget. So the three largest revenue, tax revenue streams are sales tax, utility tax, and property tax. Those three total 14.2 million. All of our other tax revenues total 1.2 million. Things like criminal justice, sales tax, leasehold excise tax, motor vehicle fuel tax. So there's a, there's a whole, there's a whole slug of small revenues, tax revenues and shared revenues we get from the state. But over 90% of our, of our taxes come from these, these three tax revenues. So let's start with sales tax. Sales tax are generated from taxable retail sales. Those are taxable sales that are made within city limits. In addition to that, I didn't include this in the slide, but the city does get credit for sales of online products that are delivered to the city of Anacortes. And that's, that's, that's a, that's turned out to be a real, a real boon for the city. There was, when that was put in place nearly 15 years ago now, there was, it was, it was hard to imagine how the online sales grew compared to what it is now. But sales tax is, it totals 8.8% within the city limits, or with it, for the city of Anacortes. Of that 8.8%, 6.5% goes to the state. The city gets 0.85, the county gets 0.15, so that 1% there is called the local share. A tenth goes to the county for criminal justice, Skagit Transit gets 4 tenths, 1/10th for mental health, that goes to the county as well. Skagit 901 gets a tenth. This public safety, that's, we have an interlocal with Skagit County to allocate that 3/10th sales tax to the county to run and pay for the debt service of the jail. Transportation Benefit District is 2/10ths, and then affordable housing, 1/10th. So I think I've covered all those restrictions here, so. Sales tax, so coming, this is the same material we just talked about on the left side of the, of the slide. But sales tax is the most volatile of the three major tax revenue streams, and it's the most difficult to project. Sales tax, it's impacted more than any other revenue stream during economic downturns. During the Great Recession, sales tax decreased 25% at its lowest point. And that was when sales tax was about a $4 million revenue stream. I think it was in 2007 is when it peaked, and 2009 was its lowest point. But the difference between those two budget years was $1 million. Yeah, that was, that was a tough time. So sales tax budgeting, so 2019, when we're looking at these numbers down here, keep in mind that a high school project was going on, so this sales tax revenues reflected that. 2020 COVID hit, and there are a number of unknowns still right now. The second wave of COVID is worse than the first, you can see that worldwide in the figures. The second COVID wave is already affecting the economy. I saw a, a week ago, I watched a webinar where economic indicators were already pointing down because of the second COVID wave. And there's still no sign of a second stimulus from the federal government. I believe a lot of why things haven't been as bad, sales tax-wise, this year as they were back in 2008, 2009 is because of the stimulus. The Federal Reserve even said the same thing in one of their quarterly meetings recently. But the effects of that are starting to wear off. And hopefully, hopefully, once we get to the new year, maybe, that can, can get something going with the second stimulus. But that first stimulus, the expanded benefits, that was, that helped a lot. But I wanted to look at where we're at through October and then through year-end. So in 2019 through October, we collected $4 million, 70,000 at year-end, it was 4.9. And remember, we had the, still had the high school at that time. So 2020, we're at 3.8 through October. And so looking at how sales taxes started to come back, I mean, it dropped really significantly for a couple of months, and it's, it started to come back somewhat. So kind of using, using that recovery and what we've collected historically on a month-to-month basis, we're projecting that we'll collect about 4, sorry, about 4.7 million. So what our budget was through October, we were expecting to collect about, you know, just over 4 million, almost 4.1 million, and projecting about 4.9 in collections through, through year-end. So what we're projecting now is, you know, 4.705, so nearly, what, $245,000 off of what we had budgeted. So the 2021 budget, so again, considering those same things, how the economy appears to have been recovering and kind of ignoring the, not seeing another stimulus yet and some other things, but just based on historical collections and the recovery that we've seen the second half of this year, we put together a sales tax projection of 4.8 million, which is about $97,000 more than what we are projecting to collect this year. So we're budgeting about a 2% increase in sales tax for next year. So a lot of material there, happy to answer any questions you might have, or if this kind of makes sense, we can just plug along. Okay, so property tax, let's talk about property tax. We've already talked about property tax a little bit, so this will be, a lot of this will be reviewed. Property tax is the most stable of the three major revenue streams. It's nearly 100% collectible, even during the Great Recession, I think, collection was around 90% on, on property tax. Can increase by 1% over the existing levy, and then new construction is added to the tax rolls on top of that. So let's, let's talk about that a little bit. That's illustrated, illustrated here. This is the last several years of our property tax levy. So looking at, looking at 2020, for example, you start out with the 2019 levy, so this is the actual levy as reported to us and distributed to us from the assessor's office through the treasurer's office. But we had a $5.177 million levy in 2019. 1% increase of that was $51,774. And on top of that, we received an additional $67,309 in property tax from new construction that was added to the tax rolls to give us a 2020 total levy of $5.296 million. And you can see that distribution for the last several years, the 1% increase and then the additional new construction. But that's how, that's how that works, so the new construction is automatic, the 1% is through council action. And again, this is that same, that same illustration I used earlier, 453,000 average assessment generating, generating that amount of property tax. Okay? Utility tax is that third revenue stream, that third, you know, major, major revenue stream. So utility tax, it's more stable than sales tax, a little less stable than property tax. Private, and it's, utility tax is assessed on both private utilities and public utilities. Private utilities, illustrated on this right side of the, of the chart. So private utilities include electric, natural, natural gas, telephone, and cable TV. These rates are established by statute. The public utilities, water, sewer, storm, solid waste, and recycling are established through council action. So I wanted to point out the solid waste, the state does have its own utility tax that charges on solid waste of 3.6%. The city has an 8.4%, so the total for solid waste is 12% and recycling is 12%. And the reason those are higher, when we put the pavement management program in place several years ago, that was one of the revenue streams that council took action to increase because of the impact that solid waste and recycling trucks have on the roads. So that's, that utility tax was increased to 12%. And that additional 5% is allocated to the road maintenance fund. So that goes, when a receipt comes in for, from utility tax, or when a, somebody pays their utility bill, that portion of utility tax is allocated directly to the road. road overlay fund, or to the road maintenance fund, sorry. So as I said, public utility rate set by council, uh, and it's taxed against the gross cost of the utility bill, so consumption drives that revenue stream. Um, in the private utility tax, we noted in two thousand and nineteen, there was a drop in, um, in private receipts and we, we tied that back to, uh, a reduction in cable TV. Um, since then, so we budgeted for that accordingly and since then, it's, it's come back just, just a little bit. But, um, what we're seeing, what we're seeing in utility taxes this year in twenty twenty is, um, a reduction in utility tax from the public utility tax. Consumption is, is down. In two thousand, two thousand and eighteen, we're at three point eight four nine for a total utility tax of public and private. Two thousand and nineteen, it was, um, it was four million. So far this year, we're at, um, we're at one point five. When you look at what we had budgeted to this point of the year, we're down about thirty-nine thousand from what we had budgeted. Our private utility tax, and this is looking at, you know, year to date, so both actuals and budget year to date. So we're down about thirty-nine thousand utility tax. On the public side, we're up about forty-eight thousand on utility tax collection on the private side. So, the overall, our utility tax revenues are still slightly over what we had budgeted, but that's because the private utility tax has actually come back a little bit higher than what we were anticipating. But for twenty twenty-one, we're setting our budget at a total of four million forty-six, which is, uh, slightly higher than, than what we had collected in two thousand and nineteen. And that's, that's based on projections through the end of this year and some, um, continued recovery. So, we are anticipating that water consumption will not continue to decrease. We're budgeting in anticipation of consumption coming back a little bit. And, so that's, um, so that's kind of the, kind of the picture on, on, on taxes, um, and how we got to those, those budgeted figures. And those budgeted figures are what's, what's driving the, or supporting the expenditure budget. Um, I wanted to revisit these positions that we talked about, uh, last week. And it's the same, it's the same positions, but I've color coded them. Hopefully this kinda makes sense and to be able to keep this and have it as a, as a reference maybe. Um, but what's, the green positions are what we are actively or anticipating filling in, um, first quarter of twenty twenty-one. So, um, hoping to fill these soon, the HR director, the fire EMS position and then three officer positions. So actively recruiting for those. Purple is new positions for the twenty twenty-one budget. This IT systems administrator is the only new position added to twenty twenty-one. What we have in red are the positions that we are eliminating from the budget. We aren't doing any direct layoffs. Um, these are all open positions through attrition and have not been replaced because of the hiring freeze that was in place. And then orange is positions that we have in the budget, we wanna hold open in twenty twenty-one. And then, based on projections that we have in place, as long as, once we get into twenty twenty-one, we can see that those projections are accurate, we wanna try and fill these. And that's the records position at APD, the senior center administrator, and then one of the parks maintenance positions. Uh, the other parks maintenance position is being eliminated from the budget along with the several library positions. Blue are, these are open positions, but they're positions that are not funded by taxes, actually. So, uh, we have two street maintenance positions. One of them is split between, um, the several utilities and one is split between the utilities and the road fund. So, so blue is not supported by taxes. Brown is partially supported by taxes. So, the street maintenance, maintenance position, uh, ninety-six thousand in total, seventy-five thousand of that is funded out of the road fund. It's ninety thousand dollar engineering position, thirty-six thousand of that is funded out of the road fund. So, same information we talked about the last week or two, but wanted you to have, uh, have this in your packet.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walsh.
What is the revenue source for the road fund?
So it's not, it's not just taxes on the road fund, so that we have two road funds, road maintenance and road construction. And the, um, and both of them get some allocation of property tax, except for this year, the road maintenance fund. All of that property tax has been reallocated back to the general fund. Road maintenance, other significant, uh, revenue sources are, uh, motor vehicle fuel tax, um, and utility tax, uh, and REIT. So those are really the, kinda the, the three main revenue streams for road maintenance fund is, um, taxes, property tax, motor vehicle fuel tax and utility tax, um, and REIT. The road construction fund, um, because of the way we allocate these positions, um, part of them are funded in, um, the road construction fund. And we do have some amount of property tax that's allocated to road construction to support part of that. The rest of the road construction fund is made up through, uh, REIT transfers and grants. And again, REIT stands for real estate excise tax and that is a restricted, um, a restricted resource restricted for public works use.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Mulson.
What would be the process of getting these positions back? When we say they are eliminated, how eliminated does that mean?
So the ones in red here, um, that are, that will be eliminated, that would require coming back to city council with a budget amendment and getting approval to, um, add that amount of budget expenditure and, um, FTE back into the budget.
And identifying, uh, revenue to support it, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Mayor, Mayor Gere.
In orange.
Well, I, I was kinda piggybacking on, uh, Ms. Mulden's question. I've, I've never seen us do a budget like that where we're kinda, it looks, first of all, Steve, your, your job's hard enough predicting the crystal ball of, you know, what do we think revenue's going to be in the next year? But I think we're really making it even harder by looking at those, I guess, orange positions and saying, uh, at what point are we gonna, three months into it, say, okay, the revenues are coming in good and we're, we're supporting these and then the council's gonna amend the budget? Is, is that kinda the plan?
Yeah. No, it's a good question and it's, it's confusing. So let me, let me jump down to this, um, so this screen shows, um, this is the, the budget numbers by fund. So both the, um, the revenue budget and the expenditure budget. So these expenditure figures include the elimination of those positions that were in red, those, okay? So in the, the general fund, that point seven museum FTE is removed from this. So, that nineteen point four doesn't include that. Um, this parks expenditure budget of two million and one does not include that ninety-nine thousand, uh, maintenance worker. And then library, same, same thing. All of those FTEs removed from there. So, those funds or these, these funds with those positions eliminated still have a shortfall that needs to get made up. In parks, it's forty thousand. I think parks has probably around four hundred thousand in cash reserves. So for a, you know, for a one-year, yeah, if we're looking at a one-year kinda timeframe of forty thousand short, they can, they can make that up. I, you know, I'm really comfortable using cash reserves to make that up. And the same with the library, they have similar, I don't remember off the cuff, I puzzled, but it's something like that, four or five hundred thousand, around a half million in cash. So they have, you know, they have a cash reserve that's enough to absorb that, um, that amount. But, looking into the future, my concern with, um, trying to carry those for a year would be once we get in, you know, we get into beyond twenty twenty-one, we get into twenty twenty-two, we've hired those positions, the economy hasn't turned around, it's continued to, you know, or even gotten worse and then we're in a position where we need to, we need to lay off. So, the, the positions, so these positions in green and orange, if you will, are included in those expenditure budgets. So the, um, like in parks, for example, they have a forty thousand dollar shortfall, but it does include the senior center director, which is unfilled and does include one of the maintenance positions, which is unfilled.
And also Steve, in the general fund, that shortfall will be covered by a line of credit for fiber or a grant, correct?
Correct, yeah. So we have, um, you know, a commercial debt instrument lined up for, um, for the general fund to continue the fiber build out if the grant doesn't come through. Ideally, the grant comes through and then, um, we would use that, but that's exactly right, yeah.
Mayor Gere.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Huglen, for the purposes of this spreadsheet or this page at least, are we prorating those orange, the cost of those orange positions, say at like nine months or six months? Which kinda gets to what Mr. Miller was.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a good question and, um, Pat Kamira and I were just talking about that earlier today. So, so these figures include a full, the full year, so as if that position, that position is budgeted for the entire twelve months.
Got it.
So if we, we didn't fill like the senior center position till maybe April or May, there's some cash there that could be used in another way, so, you know.
Yep, exactly. Uh, so just a couple more things we'll run through real quickly I wanted to talk about tonight. Um, this is the same chart we showed last week, uh, has a, um, a summary of these positions that were eliminated from the budget, summary of the FTEs being held open and the, and the impact, um, or, or savings in budget for those positions. These are the, the budget cuts that we've, that we've talked about. So the ERNR replacement charges that we've eliminated from the twenty twenty-one budget, nine hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred thousand cut out of overlays. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit more about that, cause there, maybe there's some options. So, um, Mayor and I have been talking about public comment that, um, cities receive this budget season and I think it's great. I love seeing the, um, the community involved in the budget process. Um, but we received significant comment on kinda three, three areas. The police staffing, um, potential addition of a social worker to bolster the public safety department and the street maintenance. Um, and, those are, those are the three areas that come to mind that I could think of as I was, as I was going through the public, public comments. So, um, so kinda the options of that, like, so the police staffing, all of those positions are in that current budget. So, um, that is, it's taken care of for this, for this budget cycle, I guess. The social, the social worker, um, we don't have, like, there's no, there's no additional funding in our, in our current budget. And perhaps the idea could be to develop a strategic plan, start working on how to, you know, the, working on the mechanics of bringing that position, that position into the city. Um, and then while that strategic plan is being developed, um, try to find options for funding. Um, we looked at, uh, CDBG, I emailed with, um, Joanne Stewart and Don Mismer earlier today, and there's a portion of CDBG funding the community development block grant that may be, uh, available for that. That funding would total about fifteen thousand, so it's, it's possible that could be one of the sources that could fund a position like that. And then, you know, perhaps there would be an opportunity to partner, partner with other agencies or with other entities.
Steve, I also had.
Mayor Gere.
Yes. Just let me add one thing. I noticed in the sales tax report, there's a mental health of, um, zero point ten percent. Um, and I know that Mount Vernon uses some of that sales tax funding through the county for their position. So that's another source that we've never looked at and we could request.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. Uh, that would be ideal to be able to partner with, uh, the county or others.
Mr. Young and then Mr. Miller, I think, also had a comment on that.
Yep. Um, you know, I appreciate it, um, just, uh, us having this discussion here. I, I had, uh, talked to the chief, uh, um, our chief, um, which is really spectacular. Also, I talked to Mount Vernon's chief of police, just sort of trying to understand how they were able to work with a social worker and if it was beneficial to them. I think though that, you know, I really think that this is something we really need to look at, um, including in this budget, if at all possible, or at least in the beginning of planning for it in the short term. Because in looking at the numbers, I mean, we've got numbers that came in from the sheriff department and of course, I think we've heard the public discuss, um, numbers associated with our police department here. And, you know, when you're talking about thirty percent issues that may be beneficial for having, in addition to our police force, social worker, I, I just really think that it should be a, more of a priority for us, particularly given that the Duale Center is, what, on the third renovation, that we've got, you know, um, just the drug use, everything that we're finding for a social worker would be very beneficial. How we do that, I really appreciate Mayor in looking at where those, some of those numbers can come from. And I know that we'll be, need to be able to figure out how and what that position looks like. I'm just urging that we try to find a way to begin that now, uh, because it truly will benefit not only just our community, but everybody I've talked to indicates how beneficial it is. We're a little bit behind in that, but I guarantee you that it'll be, uh, money well spent for our community. And in no way do I mean that we, uh, penalize the police department, you know, I really don't, but I'm saying that we can benefit the community by finding a way to begin this conversation now rather than just putting it off. Because I think the urgent need is now, particularly given, you know, all of the divisions, we've had economics, the struggles with food insecurity, housing, all those things are something that a social worker could be beneficial to the city and save money. So I, I'm really pushing a little bit on that and I'm hoping we can find a way to make that possible.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Miller, did you, were you, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I, I had a general comment, but I'll, I'll comment on that, that piece first. Uh, again, there was, there was a plan, maybe not as fast as, uh, some of the citizens want us to move forward on, but there, there was a plan in, in works of having, having the, um, maybe do some part-time sharing opportunities with the, uh, um, the county and/or Mount Vernon's, uh, embedded social worker to kinda do a contract for, you know, maybe a two point two five FTE. I think this slide lays out, you know, the CDBG, there's certainly, uh, areas there and I would argue that we already do provide some of that as we pass through to organizations that do have a social worker that our police department does use on a regular basis, again, partnering with other agencies. So, again, I, I, I support that, the, the, that, uh, as we move forward in twenty twenty-one. A, a full-time, uh, one point oh FTE right now, um, in, in the twenty twenty-one budget, I don't support. But generally, I wanted to get back to my general point. This slide almost gets to my main overall budget concerns of, uh, the, beginning from your, your initial budget message, Mayor. And basically, what are the major changes for the budget from last year? And I think we're starting to see that come out in this type of slide. It's the street maintenance issue and it's the one IT position. It's the street maintenance issue, and it's the one IT position issue, and I think, and, and I think that's areas where, you know, the council, we should really be, uh, diving, diving in on to see what we can do, because we did pass, or the citizens passed a, a state, uh, a sales tax increase in order to do street maintenance. So I don't know why that wasn't mentioned in our, in our, uh, you know, we switched from TBD, from a, uh, we still have a TBD, but we switched from the car tabs increase to a sales tax...
Correct.
To, to fund the road. So I think if we, we dig, dig down in those areas, uh, I, I think we'll be able to come up in the next couple weeks of, um, supporting the budget as we move forward.
Mayor Gear, if I could add one more thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, you, the, I guess, I, I would like for us to have a conversation before we ruled this out, um, for at least a part-time or some, some way to look at the social worker in bringing that person, um, onboard, or through, I, I, I spoke with Compass Health and, um, had a meeting with them, just to sort of understand how does this work, how would they propose that it work, and then at what i- is the cost to the city and what is that cost benefit analysis for us? It was a fascinating discussion that I think would benefit council, so at some point in the very near future, I would love for us to just take about fifteen minutes and allow them to come and do a presentation to council, and I think that that may clear up how and what the costs are associated with it, and contract that out at some point without having a full-time FTE in that rim. I just think that it creates a wonderful benefit to the city, so I'd like to propose that and, uh, bring that to council as soon as possible for them to do a presentation.
Uh, Mr. Young, can I ask who you spoke to at Compass Health?
I did, I think her name is Erin, and, you know, uh, um, names are all looted me at the moment, but she is, she was one of the founders of this particular program, and, uh, part of that is that they had a, um, you know, various choices you can choose from, and, uh, so they had a specific program that they thought, um, that might be beneficial to us, particularly as it related to, um, you know, deciding if we wanted our own full-time person or we contract with them to be able to provide services, um, you know, ten-hour segments or eight-hour segments, there's a cost associated with that. And, um, I think that they can bring a clarity to that costing, because I think, you know, I hate to quote a number right now, um, but I do recall that it was under a hundred thousand for a tremendous amount of coverage, I felt, and as they indicated, much of the, uh, work is done pre-work, but if there are calls called out for these, their particular services, they're ready, because when we look at handing someone a card to say, "Reach out and contact this service," uh, to get help, the chances of that happening is just not good, and I think that they pointed out that it, when they supplied us with sheriff's data, and I know that's different from our police data, but the number of calls and the types of calls were not, um, you know, public safety calls, as they were more about, um, um, social issues, and that eats up a lot of time and a lot of resources, so I would lo- I'll supply that to you and the council, uh, as soon as I get a chance to review my notes on it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor Gear?
Good.
Walters, and then Mr. McDougal.
Um, since we've started talking about it, I hope that we could come to some conclusion on the social worker position now, maybe Mr. Hogland can take a breath, I know he's got another slide, but now might be a good time to come to a resolution on this. I really think that there are a lot of people with real needs in Anacortes. I, I feel like we are seeing them more, but there are also needs that are less visible, there are people that are shut-ins, there are people that are mentally ill who you may or may not see, they may or may not be helped by a social worker. It may be that we need to reach out to the prosecutor's office, to Skagit Valley Hospital, to figure out how, uh, some of those people may benefit from civil commitments. There are people that need a hand up that would benefit from a social worker that don't really benefit from the police and may not even be known to the police, because the police is not a full service, social service agency, has a more limited role. Um, and there's all this stuff going on, a lot of these agencies are in flux right now, that I don't think that there is any entity, no level of government that is more responsible for taking care and providing services to the people in our community than the city. I don't think we can say that it's the county's responsibility, or the state's responsibility, or the federal government's responsibility, 'cause it, it not, those entities don't, just don't take responsibility, and we are closest to them, we are closest to the people that need help. So I completely agree and suggest that we need a strategic plan to address these issues. We need to look at what all these issues are, what all the things that people need in our community. I think the, um, Housing Affordability and Community Services Council Committee is the, one of the perfect places to be looking at that, and on that committee, we have already been exploring various funding sources. I think CDBG is a pretty limited one, but there might be others, including capturing some money that currently goes to the county, that can help with, um, housing, and then maybe other money could help with some of the other services. I don't agree that we need to immediately jump to a social worker position within the police department. I think that that's totally possible as the correct course of action, but we're not there yet, we've only started talking about this in the last couple of weeks, and that, that was on nobody's radar prior, even though we were working on these issues. Um, but I'm really impressed by the number of jurisdictions that already seem to have social workers, and the statement from Mount Vernon leadership that the social worker in the Mount Vernon Police Department has had a transformative effect on their department is a really impressive statement, so I think that we ought to do something in that space. The police department has some money in overtime that they don't usually always spend, maybe about fifteen thousand dollars would be left over at the end of twenty twenty one in overtime. If they do have vacant positions, they will have unused dollars if they don't fill those positions on January one. They've got about four hundred thousand dollars in vacant position salary and benefits. If they don't fill those on January one, and it takes them three months to fill those positions, that's a hundred thousand dollars left over in the police budget right now, that potentially we could spend on some money for a contract social worker, um, or supporting another entity that has a social worker that can assist with some of the higher-profile problems that the police, the, the ongoing problems, the people that we just can't get figured out, that they're not criminals, but they have mental illness problems or some other problem that would benefit, be benefited by a social worker. And if we can encourage the police department to try this out, demonstrate some success, we can get set up for grants for other funding sources. Mount Vernon's social worker, as I think, uh, Mayor Gear mentioned, is funded partly or mostly, or two-thirds, by the county.
That's my understanding, two-thirds.
And the state is apparently, um, going to be helping fund additional social workers for Snohomish County. I think we can make this work. I, I think what we just need to say is, yeah, this is a good concept, let's get started with a little bit of cash that we have laying around that we can scrape together, start it and see how it works, um, which is not to say that there's really any doubt that it, that it would work, but it's a slow process to get these things started, and I've just identified some money that is in the budget.
Yes, you have.
We'll have zero, we won't have a lot, but we won't have zero. There, we have these needs that we have seen on the previous slide of all these positions that are, we've already adopted that are, are unfunded, so we, I, I can't justify creating another position right now, um, when we have all those needs, but I think we got to remember that the social needs in our community are ones that don't appear in the budget simply by virtue of the fact they haven't been funded before, so we need to consider that.
And Mayor Gear, I found the name of the person I spoke with, her name is Marla Johns, and she's at, you know, Compass and Health, and, uh, I think that she would be superb. Um, she is a social worker, but she's also worked, they, um, currently partner with the Skagit County Sheriff's Office, and in negotiations with multiple, uh, departments for expansion, this will still be a great resource for us, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDougal, you got comments on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I really like what Mr. Walters, um, just said, I've, I've struggled with this issue over the la- last few weeks myself, over, like, I know, I know on council, um, we want to make this a priority, but we're, we're up against, um, really up against time crunch of getting the budget passed, and as Mr. Walters pointed out, this issue, while, while social services, we've known for some time has been kind of an underrepresented, a, underrepresented part of our, the city's services and budget, um, it, it kind of snuck up on us in the last few weeks, that this is something that the community felt like should, should be prioritized. I think, I think we all feel like it should be prioritized and we want to get there, I think we're just up against a real time crunch to do that. I was originally going to suggest that we maybe hold off on one of the officer positions, maybe, you know, not make it open until, say, after February, to give us some time to, to sense, to do probably more than one study session on this, as, as Mr. Young suggested, that, you know, at, at least a study session. But the fact is, it's, it's difficult to get folks hired day one anyways, so we may have...
We will.
Yeah, we may have time, um, and that could free up some funds, and I like the idea of potentially contracting as well while we work on a larger, more holistic strategic plan for, for social services itself, um, beyond just social worker in the police department, which I think is absolutely, you know, could, probably should be a critical component of that. And, and just as a little bit of a reminder, you know, I, I think if we can get this done in, say, in the next three to six months, that's actually lightning fast for, for governments, you know, we, we started, the, the public advocacy for fiber started in two thousand fourteen, and we turned up our first customer at the beginning of this year, so that was five years. I think we can get it done much, much faster than that, but, you know, that's, it is one of the challenges that we face with, with government at any level is, uh, we're move, we'll try to move as fast as we can on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleveland?
Uh, um, I, you know, I, I appreciate everyone's comments, and I, and I applaud you, I, I totally support, you know, getting creative and figuring out and using, um, models from other areas as an example of what we can do. The one thing that I do really want to be careful, and I, and I think that it's important that we go through the process of having some of those work sessions, is that I really want to learn more about the models that are successful in other communities, but we also have to understand what the demographics of their communities are, and the challenges that they're having, and really tailor it and understand what our, our challenges are, right? So, so using some of those models that are available, that are successful, but then also including, um, when we discuss what our, our program's going to look like, or our goals and, um, expectations, meaning that, you know, I think we need to include locally the Salvation Army, the Boys and Girls Club, um, our mental health, uh, local practitioners, because they're kind of on the ground, seeing what's happening, um, obviously Compass Health. You know, Mr. Young, I think referenced the senior center a couple weeks ago, and I, I'm really concerned about our folks who are utilizing meals on wheels, that are completely, um, in, you know, not seen, not necessarily heard, but is, is there parts that should be addressed when we talk social worker, um, when it comes to our aging population also? So, um, you know, that, those are some of the things that, that I really think we need to understand about our, try to understand about our, about our community and try to really respond to, in addition to, um, you know, the homelessness and mental health and domestic violence and addiction and things like that. The other thing is, is I think there's some models, and I've talked to, I've talked to some people, I think we've all had some really good conversations with our community members who are creative and researching, working hard, and getting us really good information, is that there may be some combination where we have an on-call or a per diem, and, and we might have a, a half a dozen, um, people that are willing to kind of, that are, are practitioners, but also are willing to, um, partner with our, our, our local community, and, and maybe that that's the way to do it and evolve, anyway, so I just wanted to include that.
Great comments, this is really wonderful. Okay, so I think we've heard you, we're, we're going to bring back all of that to our next meeting on a, a, a path forward on that piece, and then the final thing that came up in the public, and then I'm going to turn over to the council for your, whatever you're wanting to see, is the final piece is the street maintenance piece, and Steve, you want to address how we can add additional funding to the street maintenance?
Sure, thank you, so that was, uh...
Ms., I want, then, Mr. Hogland, Ms. Walton, do you have something else?
I do, I'm sorry, I wanted to sort of piggyback... Earlier comments, um, but one of the things that I think that we need to do, and I agree with much of what was said, and I think we're going to come up with a great plan soon, is the importance of discussing what is already in place as far as resources, what our police do, what their partnerships are with who, with a hospital, with a family center, with Compass Health. I think we need a really substantial inventory and to bring these organizations to the table and learn what we have first, where the gaps are, and then how we most effectively and sustainably fill them.
That's it? I appreciate that, thank you. All right, Mr. Hogland, um, let's talk street maintenance, and then we're going to turn it over to the council.
Uh, so, the current street maintenance, uh, or, sorry, the current overlay program in the street maintenance fund is at one million dollars. The, um, the overlay program, the resolution the council put in place, adopted a few years ago, sets a target at one point eight, so there, um, there are REIT available, or REIT funds available, real estate excise tax, there are some REIT funds available, if council wanted to dip into those reserves, um, and apply some additional REIT revenue against the overlay program, um, this year, that would be an option to get it, you know, closer to that one point eight target. Um, I think you could easily add an additional five hundred thousand from REIT, we currently have three hundred thousand in REIT scheduled for the overlay program, um...
What do you estimate in TBD funding this next year for overlay?
Uh, one point one, one point one million. So one point, so remember, that's not, you have to, remember, we talked about the budget in whole, you can't look at individual, um, you know, revenue streams, um, you have to look at the, at the full picture, so the, um, the road, the road maintenance budget right now is at two point one, about one point one of that is from the TBD fund, we have three hundred thousand in REIT, we have utility tax, um, motor vehicle fuel tax, so all of those revenue sources, plus I'm sure a few that I'm not remembering, uh, add up to two point one. Within that two point one, there are a million dollars scheduled or budgeted for overlays. So, uh, that was something I wanted to float to council, if that had any appeal, to try and get that overlay program a little higher than where it's currently at, there are some REIT monies available.
And then you have some, I don't hear anything from the council, they're thinking, you had a couple more slides to finish up your presentation as I hand it over to the council?
Yeah, so we, so we looked, we looked at this, at this slide, this, you know, this is our, our summary budget by fund, um, what I wanted to, I just, a couple of comments I wanted to make, it, this, that this budget works, and I want, I just, I would like council to, to keep that in mind as you kind of go through your thought process on, um, on getting other, uh, other priorities into the budget or making other changes. The way this budget is set up now works, um, it's not perfect, doesn't have everything that we would like, um, but it does work, it's balanced by fund with realistic projections, and that's realistic based on what we know right now. As we talked about earlier, there are, are a lot of unknowns in the economy right now. But I would like council to keep, it, as you're looking at this, um, just keep in mind the zero-sum budget, if you, if you want to add expenditures one place, you know, consider reduction in expenditure someplace else. Uh, Mr. Walters made a good point that there, um, as those positions remain open, there is cash flow savings on that, um, so if, uh, an officer position or an HR director position, uh, all of those are in the general fund, and the longer those stay open, the more... uh, all of those are in the general fund, and the longer those stay open, the more cash flow savings there, there are, and the more cash available for, um, for another position or to do something different. But all things being equal, if all positions were filled and revenue projections come in exactly as we're, as we're projecting, it's a zero sum budget. It, it works the way it is, um, but there's not any excess.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I would ask the council if it is interested now in focusing discussion on pavement management.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I'm very interested in that. And looking at, at this slide, I guess, I, I guess, you, you know, Mr. Holblin, you say the, the budget works and, and, and I agree. The, the trouble I, I'm having is, is what we've, what we've promised our constituency, um, especially when we've asked them to vote and approve a, uh, sales tax increase in, in order to have maybe a more stable revenue source than, uh, than car tabs. I, I don't know. You could argue that point later. But I'm looking at 2.1 and 1.7 million in road maintenance and road construction. Is that the number that, that we're really spending? I, I guess, I felt like it was lost over 2.1 and we're only spending 1.1. The rest of that is in labor expenses, I'm guessing?
Yeah, so the 2.1, so, so say, say there's a million in overlays, the 1.1 that's left, um, staff costs for, you know, cracked ceiling, painting, you know.
Wait, wait, no, step, no, be, be a little clearer. Staff costs in painting or, or staff costs? Staff costs versus actual overlay?
Correct.
I'm having a hard time.
No, there's, I, I mean, all of the other things that go into road maintenance, the, the striping, cracked ceiling.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I can comfortably, we can comfortably say, uh, $3 million in road maintenance and, and ov, and overlay? Or do we want to break it down to our overlay maintenance? I mean, that's what I think. Go ahead.
The, yeah, the road construction. So are you, if, yeah, the road construction is, um, most of that, uh, most of that fund is from, uh, made up of grant funding, um.
Right. So like our couple of roundabout projects and.
Right.
Things that we've left in there. So.
Yeah, there's, there's not really overlap between those two.
So, okay, so I want to, so we want to concentrate on the, as Mr. Walters suggests, on the, let's call it 2.16 million of road maintenance.
Right.
And so break, break that number down again so we don't have to argue over things that we don't need to waste too much time arguing over. Break that number down one more time for it.
Yeah, so the overlay is 1 million of that 2.1 in expenditure budget.
Okay, so then what's the other 1.1 million for?
Um, so one of the major expenses is, um, the electricity cost for the road lighting. Um, and I don't remember off the cuff what that is. That generally runs 200 to 300,000 a year. Um, so I, I don't remember, you know, specifically what those, what those other elements are.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that would help the discussion. So in the road maintenance fund, you know, you, we're saying of the 2.16 million, 1 million right now is for overlay and potential for council to add 500,000 in REIT to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you see, you see the rest of the cost broken out?
Uh, certainly. I, I think, I think that helps, um, helps the discussion.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Uh, when we decided to put this out to the voters, we adopted resolution 2018 that created a funding formula for pavement management and also a expenditure target of 1.8 million dollars per year. And the funding formula, um, that line in the resolution said that as the city council considers adoption of the annual or biennial budget, it will consider the following revenue sources to fund the pavement management program in descending order of priority. Now, the first one is TBD revenue, so the TBD sales tax. Um, and assuming we use 100% of that towards our 1.8 million expenditure target, then the next is prilled sulfur revenue. We're currently getting no prilled sulfur revenue as a result of an agreement with the board through 2022. So that's zero off the table. And then the next is solid waste utility tax, the two thirds of the full assessed amount. And following that is REIT, and then finally, general revenues. So I have at least one question here for Mr. Holblin, and that is, are we spending all of the solid waste utility tax that we expect to bring in next year, um, that it, that is eligible for spending on this based on what we did when we increased it? Um, and, and so i- is that already in your $1 million calculation for pavement management?
It is, yep.
Okay. So of the $1 million, um, projection for how much we would actually spend on this, how much is TBD revenue?
Here, let me, um, let me sit back and pull. What, 1.1 is what the TBD revenue estimate is, uh, right now.
So.
You can open up your screen, Steve.
Yep.
If we're, if we're bringing in 1.1 in TBD, why aren't we spending 1.1?
Yeah, so this is what I've been trying to explain since, um, since we opened the budget. So the, um, the, remember we got kind of wrapped around the axle talking about pavement versus fiber revenues the very first night?
Yeah.
And you, we need to look at this in, in total. Um, we are very short on resources for the, the coming year. So the, um, so the, the 1.1 in TBD funds is going into Fund 104. We've reallocated all of the property tax. So the, the property tax, when you're looking at that original resolution, the general fund monies that are referenced there, that's property tax. So initially, um, before the TBD resolution, I think something like 400,000, 500,000 would be allocated in property tax every year to the road maintenance fund. Once that proper, once the pavement management resolution was adopted, we increased that by 200 or 300. So now it gets, it gets around seven, around 700,000. I think 690,000 was the amount of property tax that we reallocated from the road maintenance fund back to the general fund earlier this year when we did that property tax resolution. And moving into 2021, this budget you're looking at, all of that general revenue remains in the general fund. So we didn't reallocate any of that property tax back to 104. We need those resources to, to maintain the budget the way it is that we've been looking at. You know, remember, we're still 2.6 short that we're making up with a line of credit. And that is, that is in addition to the nine, or in addition to the 690,000 in property tax that's reallocated back to the general fund.
Okay, so, um, I think what I understood from prior discussions on this is that what we're doing is funding more than just the overlay program with the TBD revenue.
Correct.
We are also funding, um, the ordinary pavement management work that we were doing before the TBD program. The, the striping, the, the cleaning, the smaller projects.
Right. Yes.
But our, our resolution said that we adopt this, this target of 1.8, um, to be spent exclusively on professional services. That is overlays, similar pavement management work, you know, like the slurry seal, so it's not proper to call it exclusively overlays, and other work necessary to implement that. So it seems to me that taking money from the TBD sales tax and spending it on the other pavement management work that we were already doing, which is also good work, it's just, it's work we were already doing, and this was supposed to be over and above. That's what we told the voters, that you're going to authorize the sales tax, and we're going to do more work than we were doing before. Um, I, I think that that's not consistent with what we told them we were going to be doing. And, and, you know, this is a bad budget year, but it's also a high priority. I don't know why we wouldn't use whatever REIT is available. Um, I don't know why we would hold back REIT. I mean, obviously, next, the following year, there's going to be some other project that's going to want REIT. But we're going to be that much more in the hole on pavement management.
Absolutely. So that was the idea behind holding back REIT is the R Avenue project, the 12th and Commercial project. We have all of these big projects coming up that require, there's some grant funding evidently available, but they, from my understanding, require large matches. So we, we need to hold, if we're going to do those projects, we need to hold some of that REIT back so that we can make, at, at least make those matches to do those programs.
Okay, that's, that's new information I didn't previously have. I try not to ask questions I don't already know the answer to, but, um, that makes sense to me as well. Um.
But.
I have to ponder that.
I, I would, um, but the, the, the REIT, the real estate excise tax, the overlay program is a, you know, it's a wonderful program to use that money for. So if that's how council wants to, you know, to use that, that money, I'm happy to make those adjustments.
Ma- Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller.
I mean, I, I, I do support, I appreciate Mr. Walters. You go and pulling that, uh, resolution. I was looking for it at the time. And yeah, we work our way down to the fourth option, which is REIT. Um, I, I think that's an appropriate way to go. I'm a little concerned about holding the money back for 12th and Commercial is probably a bad example, but, uh, having higher priorities than trying to dream about what our match is going to be for a possible grant, that's not something I, I, I would rather be putting more money to our 2021 overlay program than, than holding back money for a project that we don't know exactly what the grant is and what our match is going to be, uh, since we've got overlay, overlay thing. Obviously, a project like that's going to be, you know, wash dot primarily anyway. But those, those are my thoughts on this overlay. Thanks.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young.
Uh, you know, I totally agree with the, you know, the sentiment, uh, you know, and the thought process of just trying to figure out how we do this. In my, it's my opinion that where we are right now is that we're in the middle of having to make difficult decisions. So resources that we do have need to be brought forward whenever possible to get us through this in the hopes that better days are ahead. But right now, you know, we, we're, as a country, let alone a city, we're needing to use all of our assets as best as we can and as smart as we can for the greatest good. So I, I'm open to using part of REIT to help this come along.
Right. Is that kind of a head nod if you want Steve to bring that forward?
Mayor Gear?
Okay, all right. Yes, who is that?
The multi-year forecast for where we're spending REIT should be contained within the CFP though.
Okay.
We should be looking at what projects we want to push backward in the CFP if we're going to be spending more REIT.
So we'll bring this forward and coordinate it in the CFP. Okay.
Okay, so what amount of REIT are we bringing forward for pavement management? Another 500?
Steve, just a 500.
How about 800? There's a, I, I think we'll end the year with, um, over a million in REIT reserves. If you want to fully fund it at 1.8, then.
That would be great. Okay, how about we bring that forward and we'll, go ahead.
That's, that's not a costless choice, though. Uh, you know, like I, I think that we should fully fund the pavement management program at 1.8, but I also want to know what, what I'm not doing if I'm funding that.
We'll bring that to you. Good.
Yeah, we'd be.
Mayor Gear?
Make it closer?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, go ahead.
It would be great to see what it looks like if we fully fund at 1.8 versus say if we fund at 1.5.
Okay, okay. Steve and I love a challenge.
Absolutely. Um.
And I love.
Mr. Walters?
I, I mean, I, there, there's a reason that you and Mr. Holblin have made all these choices in the budget. It's, 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 but it's not purely a technical exercise. Uh, my point here, and I think all of our, our objectives, is just to make sure that, you know, what our values are line up with the technical choices that you guys have made.
Absolutely.
Uh, if I may, Mayor?
Um, go ahead.
I'm, uh, a little unclear as to the mechanical changes to the budget to accommodate the, um, potential social worker addition for, uh, for when we bring this back in two weeks.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I would propose no changes, um, especially if we're adopting the budget at the fund level. Um, the money that I propose to be used would still be within the fund, and it would be within the department, and it wouldn't be on the right line.
We're off, uh, off of Channel 10.
Yeah.
We're not an open meeting now.
We are now back in open meeting on Channel 10. Um, yeah, the audi, the phone call for Channel 10 in Grand is all just cut out, so, uh, but we're back up now and going live.
So, Mr. Walters, maybe you can pick up where you maybe go back a sentence or two in your last comment?
Uh, yeah, so I was just saying that I don't anticipate any changes necessary to the budget, um, to accommodate the social worker, at least as I proposed, because if there's excess money left over in the salaries and benefits and overtime line items, um, then that wouldn't, reallocating those funds to professional services wouldn't be contrary to the adopting budget ordinance.
Correct. Okay.
Um, I did want to propose or, um, pose an inquiry as to other options for funding pavement management. There's something like 400,000 dollars from REIT in the budget for miscellaneous facilities projects. And previously, Public Works has told us what those projects are going to be, and this year they have declined to do that, uh, potentially because of a carpeting snafu that we experienced in the past. I'm wondering if, um, we could get that list of projects and then maybe decide whether we want to fund those projects or not.
Okay, you can bring that forward. So, so in addition to the, the funding for, um, pavement management, and we've talked about the social worker, and we've talked about the police, are there any, is there any other element that the council needs us to bring back to you, um, for, um, discussion on the 7th, um, and possible approval of the budget at that time? Is there anything else that's out? Is there anything else that's out there that we haven't addressed, you're concerned about? I'd really like to hear that tonight.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Young.
Uh, not to add anything, I don't believe I am. I think I, I just wanted to reiterate that I, I think you mentioned that maybe, um, April or May, um, we would get a chance to take a hard look at the senior center. And the only reason I'm really bringing that back up again because so much of our population is above 55 and many are alone and, you know, during COVID, all of the things associated with it. So it's so important that the senior center, given everything that they do for our population, whether that's Rotary or any of the clubs, we just want to make sure that they stay healthy and we think sometimes that, that leadership void there is impactful in a greater extent on our whole city. So I, I know you're working through it. I just wanted to bring it up again, given everything else we're talking about.
I appreciate that and I'm, uh, I'm willing, I'm working with, um, John Lunsford from the Parks Department and, um, uh, would love to hear from the Senior Center Foundation and we will definitely address that because you're absolutely right. We have a, a population, um, that right now I think is probably underserved. We are doing meals on meals. We do have a phone tree. We are doing welfare checks. But our normal, normal robust program isn't happening. So it is in the buy, we, we have that full amount budgeted. So we've got the, the ability to move forward as quickly as we deem that we can and it's necessary for the well-being of seniors. So thank you for that, Mr. Young. Um, all right, all right. Anything else for tonight, for the good of the order?
Mayor Geer.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
There's one new position in the budget. That's an IT systems administrator.
Correct.
The idea here, I understand, is to hire a more senior position into the IT department because the existing positions were not hired at this level. But the proposed job's salary is, in my judgment, probably not high enough to attract a senior systems administrator. And if we don't do that, then I don't think we've achieved the stated objective. So, um, I don't support adding that position at that pay scale, at that budgeted amount. I think that we have sort of some serious needs in IT, but I think that we need to hold off on hiring additional people, um, until we have a real plan to make that productive. We've added staff to IT in the past. Um, and I'm not, I'm not willing to support continued adding staff without that plan. Um, there's also $30,000 in, I think, general revenue in the budget for electric vehicle charging stations. That is match for a grant that we either have gotten or may get. Um, it's not that good of a grant, I think, because it has like a one-to-one match, but also, um, I don't think it's a pressing need. And this came to us in the council finance committee when we were already in the pandemic and we said, "No, we're not going to have extra $30,000 as match for electric vehicle charging stations." And I drive an electric car. Like, I understand the need for these. Um, so I, I don't think that that should be included in the budget and I don't think that we should accept that grant. Also, I note that Granicus is not working again tonight and, um, this is a recurring theme and we shouldn't be spending any money on that. So there's, you know, 30, $10,000, $90,000. Um, some of these start to add up pretty quickly.
Okay, we'll look at all those.
Well, if I, if I may, that.
Mr. Hogman, go ahead.
We have a solution for Granicus, but it's not a free solution. So we'll be spending about, uh, the same amount on the new system, but we'll be rid of Granicus. The, um, the reviews and the, um, and the people that we've talked to that are currently using the system have good things to say about it. So we are, we're hopeful, but, but there won't necessarily be a cost savings, uh, from cutting, cutting ties with Granicus.
That's something to consider as well. I would also propose that in the text of the budget ordinance that we adopt, we add a hiring freeze so that it's, and it's part of the ordinance and it's not linked to the pandemic because we, we have already experienced a negative budsherry effects of the pandemic and that will be ongoing for some months. But even if we come out of it, we'll still have that hole to recover from. And we can create an exception for the police officer positions, for the, for the HR director, for the fire, for the ones that we choose. Um, but otherwise, I, I think that there should be a, a, an explicit hiring freeze to try to keep us in a spot where we hold those positions open as long as possible so that we don't, um, so that we're able to save that money as long as possible.
Any other comments? Well, you've given us some, um, good marching orders and we'll put this together for you and we'll bring it back to you on the 7th. Um, really great meeting, good input. Um, and if there's nothing else, um, I want to thank you for your time and the good work on this 2021 budget. And we are going to make a budget that works for, for the citizens. And at this time, I adjourn the meeting. Have a nice evening. Night. Goodbye.